... of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome to this meeting of the Board of Supervisors of the Sunland Lake Improvement District. The next regular meeting is scheduled for Friday, October 23, 2020, at 9:00 a.m., right here in the community center. Please silence or turn off your cell phones now. The first item on the agenda is the consent agenda. Is there a motion?
Motion approved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Seeing none from the board, any discussion from the public? Chrissy, call a question.
Supervisor Gilpin.
Yes.
Supervisor Brooks.
Yes.
Supervisor Branson.
Yes.
Supervisor Herrick.
Yes.
President Hotelling.
Yes. The next item on the agenda, I'm sure nobody is here for, 5A, Resolution Number 2020-10/09-33, a resolution of the Sunland Lake of Sebring Improvement District approving the sale of Unit 12 Properties to Ramist Door Properties, Inc. Is there a motion?
Motion approved. Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Can staff give us a brief?
Yes, good morning, Supervisors. Attached you'll find a vacant land proposal to purchase 1,353 lots from the district for $500,000. The proposed development consists of 86 single-family homes with a retirement community along with 108 single-family residential homes from a one-half acre to a one-acre platted lots. And I'd like to introduce Raymond Horneck, who would like to discuss this with the board.
Good morning.
Good morning.
We're good now? No? Yeah, you're speaking.
Okay. Give it COVID. So, this morning, we're here to talk about the contract offer that's been submitted to the district for a portion of Unit 12. The property in question consists of around 1,500 properties. The offer has been submitted to the district for $500,000 to the district and $580,000 plus or minus to the county for past due taxes that are owed currently. So, the total offer for the property is $1,080,000 plus or minus, not $500,000. The property is subject to a due diligence period of 120 days. Our concern during that timeframe, our main concern, is the traffic study that needs to be approved in order to get us the traffic in through the Schumacher area. We're concerned about that area failing, and if that does fail, we will not be able to purchase the property. Any further questions?
Any questions from the board? Did I understand in my reading of the contract that you have an optional 60-day extension on the 120-day review period?
Yes, at that point, if we exercise that option, we'll have a second $50,000 non-refundable deposit at that point. So, at that point, the district would have the initial $50,000 deposit, non-refundable, plus the second $50,000. So, in order to exercise that option, the district will have $100,000 non-refundable at that point. At that point, we're going to have a pretty clear idea, but not a guaranteed idea, that we're going to be going forward before we give any non-refundable money.
As far as the infrastructure, you'll be doing that on your dime?
Yes. Now, with all properties and all developments that I've done, and I think that everybody has done, everything is paid for by the developer. There is not one penny that comes from any of the taxpayers of the district. The roadways, we pay for. The water lines, we pay for. The underground sewer lines, we pay for every of them. We even have to pay for the underground electricity system, which makes no sense to me, but we still have to pay it. So, at the end of the day, 100% of the fees and costs for the roadways, et cetera, will be funded by us.
What are your access points to the property?
Well, we are hopeful to come off of Ortega with our main entry. We have included in this transaction a small portion of Unit 9 in order to give us a secondary access if necessary, and that will be determined most likely by the fire marshal. And then, we're also most likely going to be accessing as a construction entrance or something, I don't know what we will call it, off of Ponce de Leon. And the reason for that is to make sure that we lower the traffic count going to Schumacher Road, because Schumacher Road is the linchpin in this whole thing. If Schumacher Road fails, then the whole project fails. So, we want to have the traffic count as much as we can deferred up towards Sunland Lake Boulevard.
Ponce.
Ponce to Sunland Lake, 227.
Go over again about how Schumacher can fail. What exactly are you concerned about? One more question.
Are you talking about Schumacher Road?
Yeah.
Well, and this would be a good question for Drew, but from what I understand, once the traffic count gets to a certain point, then Schumacher Road would have to go from a two-lane road to a four-lane road. If that happens, if the funds are not available from the county or from DOT, then it would fall onto the developer. If that cost were to fall onto us, we would say, "We're not doing this project because we can't make enough money here to pay for that four-lane road." So, that would be the problem, and that would be the thing that would keep us and prevent us from doing this development.
So, you've done a lot of work on this, so I'm assuming you think it's not a big, I mean, it's not...
I think it's certainly possible. I've walked all this property, I've done a lot of research on it. I've been here for many years. I think I've been a builder in this area for 32 years, and my father before me. I've had my eye on Unit 12 and what is now Tanglewood for the last 25, 30 years, and I lost Tanglewood a long time ago, and hopefully, this one comes back to us. So, yeah, I've done plenty of homework over the years.
Well, Drew, what do you think the chances of a problem are?
For traffic-related, like Raymond said, if the county requires them to do any major upgrades to Schumacher, I don't know the exact traffic count of what triggers, like, a road improvement. We had one where we were doing design for an ALF on Schumacher, and the county engineer at the time was going to make him put in a double left-hand turn lane or a suicide lane, just like a third lane in the middle, but that's still a significant cost to go in and widen a road, an extra 12 feet, because you've got to do drainage improvements and everything that goes along with it, you're in potentially millions of dollars just to do a road improvement, which that could take all his profit or make him go in the hole just to build a subdivision out. So, that's not something we, it would be profitable to him, but that's why he was talking about looking at the additional entrances, because it helps divide your trips per day on Schumacher, or if we could do something to promote more traffic through Sunland Lake, which I know is not ideal for Sunland Lake, but it would help him do that.
And part of the design of this project, with that all kept in mind, is the reason for making a very large portion of it, large acreage lots, whether it be a half-acre, three-quarter acre, acre, acre and a quarter, to reduce the amount of properties, which also reduces the amount of trips. Anything we do, we're already on the verge of Schumacher failing, so we can't go in there and put 1,000 homes, or 1,300 homes, or 1,500 homes. It would never pass. You'd have to have a four-lane road from 27 all the way down Schumacher and into this project in order for it to pass and not make Schumacher fail. So, everything that, if I can't make this work as designed, I don't see it working at all without somebody at some point in time widening Schumacher or double-laning Ponce de Leon and doing some improvements to the main boulevard. So, everything that we have discussed, everything we're trying to do, I think, and Drew may, he can chime in on this, I think, if we go any lower on the count, there's no profit in it either.
Right.
So, it's a fine line we're walking to try to get something, try to make something happen here.
Along Drew's comment, would a left-turn lane be enough expense that it would kill the project?
I have no idea until I run the numbers. And the biggest thing is, in that first 120 days, I'll be at Drew's office tomorrow morning, if this is approved, trying to figure out whether that is a 10% probability, or a 90% probability, or 100% probability. If we find out immediately after talking with Drew and talking with Gator down at the county, if it's going to definitely fail, then we'll know very quickly that I'll be looking for my refund on the deposit. So, it's critical, and I'm at the point where it makes no more sense for me to go do any more homework or any more due diligence until I know that if I do all this work, I'm going to get something out of it. And the only way I can get something out of it is if I own the property, eventually I get to develop it at great risk and hopefully get the payback later in time. But at this point in time, I've done all the homework and research that I can to the point to where now it's going to cost money, real money, and time. So, now, we have to have a contract if I'm going to continue forward and try to pursue this. But again, as it was reported in the paper, people are concerned about cost at a district or anything like that, just like with Magnolia Gulf Villas that I've just done, the Preserve, you name it, we pay all the fees.
Okay. Any other questions for the developer?
No, I talked with Ray quite a bit and Tanya, and you've covered everything as far as, you know, or I have, in our meetings before.
Okay. That's basically what we've talked about right now. And I don't know that there's been much more, there really isn't a whole lot more that we can discuss. It's a group of properties that has potential to be developed, and there's only one possible way to do it that I see, and I've been here for a long time in the community, and this is a possibility. And if this doesn't work, I don't know what we can do out there. Basically, in my opinion, if this doesn't work, you've got a big piece of land that's more or less worth until somebody puts a four-lane road in to Schumacher, back to its property. And nobody, no developer is going to pay that.
How much is a four-lane would have cost for a statutory hospital? Ballpark.
Well, the turn lane onto Sunland Lake Boulevard from Highway 27 is a $750,000 grant that we received in a couple of years, so that kind of gives you an indication. That turn lane, that extra turn lane on 20, from 27 on to Sunland Lake Boulevard, that's the grant itself, so...
And that would be probably less than 10% of this project if you were to four-lane Schumacher.
I don't have numbers on, like, road widening construction, but a few years ago, if you're rebuilding a road, so you're just ripping up all the base material and repaving, rebuilding the whole road, it was about $1 million a mile. So, you're going to be close to that. That's a two-lane road, so if you're adding either two more lanes, it's going to be approaching that, or if you're doing one more lane, it'll probably be 60% of that if you're going to have to add a third lane, which is like the double left-hand turn lane I was talking about.
Now, eventually, it's going to have to happen as growth comes, but if it comes slowly and it's on properties already in the back of the district, it will be done in the long-term plans of the county, most likely. This isn't a long-term plan of the county, so we have to fit in under the current guidelines and the current rules.
I think this may be for Drew more than you. The waste treatment plant, is, do we have sufficient capacity to handle the additional units?
At this time, we do. We looked over all of the, Tanya had me look at all of our last year's usage and capacity of both plants. Right now, we're operating at about 400,000 out of the 700,000 a day on average over the last year. That, we're at, that's like at the peak, so that's at 57% capacity right now. Looking over the numbers, it shows we've been working on infiltration, like repairs and plugging leaks and manholes, and that's been like a tremendous, it's had 13% reduction in actual wastewater flows over the last year. So, looking at August of last year and August of this year, it's down 13%. And we shouldn't be going, our usage hasn't reduced, so that, almost all that could be contributed to rainwater or infiltration groundwater. So, right now, we have plenty of capacity, because we're expecting his improvements to be around 50,000 gallons a day once it's full-built out. And it could take, what, five to 10 years to do fully built out? Just depends.
Perfect world.
Yeah, so, that's like worst-case scenario for us, for impacts to the, our facilities, but right now, we have plenty of capacity for his improvements.
Would we need to divert some that is going to the one facility in order to make room for his project on this side of the property?
We've looked into that. It depends on, it depends on growth, like how much grows going to the 23 plant. I know we have a couple of commercial projects that are in the works right now. We don't expect them to be a huge impact, like 3,000 to 5,000 gallons a day, so it's not going to put a huge dent in the plant. But if for some reason we get a boom on the south side of Sunland Lake Boulevard, we might have to redirect, like we looked at redirecting some of the hospital, that's about 30,000 gallons a day, maybe a little more. We've also looked into doing an interconnect, if we needed to pump some from the Florida Avenue lift station and redirect it to Unit 4, we could, that could be anything. We could max out the other plant if we had to, but we don't want to do that. But we have looked into it, we could do it if it becomes a problem.
Now, it's my understanding that this was looked into prior to this becoming an issue or being brought up. The district was already looking into transferring some of the sewage from the hospital to the north plant already, so it's not because of this project.
Understood.
Yeah, correct.
I just wanted to mention too, I didn't mention it to you, Ray, but my church, or the church we go to, just bought some property off of...
Schumacher.
Schumacher, and we were told, now, this is probably in the long plan, that Schumacher will become a four-lane highway straight out to somewhere. But that's not in my lifetime, I don't think, but there is plans to, because they, we just purchased over 10 acres right there, you can see the sign.
Yeah.
And their plans and our plans of the church was that Unit 12 could be developed, and was one of the reasons why the church gave us the option to buy it and give us some money or okayed it. I mean, it all has to do with that, but I think Schumacher, I don't know when that will happen, but I would think the county would look at it.
It will happen in the county's due time and in their normal process. If we want to push that timeline forward, then we have to pay typically. So, if this project pushes the envelope and pushes that to have to be done now, they're going to look to us most likely for the funds in order to do that, which then kill the deal. It may very well be on their long-term plans that in five years, they're going to widen it. Well, I'm not waiting five years, but five years from now, the economy may be in the tank again, you know, who knows? Right now, is the time to do it, so...
We were led to believe it wouldn't be tomorrow.
It won't be tomorrow, I can guarantee you that. And if this doesn't go tomorrow, then it's, every day that goes by is scarier for us as a developer to take on something such as this, because, you know, we don't control the economy, we just kind of roll with the punches the best we can. When the market seems to be hot, we take a gamble, which this is a huge gamble, and we only take it if we think that the economy's going to go long enough to at least get us to break even. So, that's where we're at right now. But if we wait two, three, four years from now, you know, who knows what it's going to be? If I had a crystal ball, I'd be retired and I wouldn't be here, that's for sure. I think I'd be on a beach in Hawaii somewhere.
Okay. Any other questions for the developer or for staff? I have one, and I'm sure you have thought about it, but from the perspective of an appraisal for what it's worth, it says it's worth $3.8 million, and your offer at 500 plus taxes, so say a million, are you willing to look at a counteroffer that would be at a higher price?
Well, now, I put some numbers together, and they are, basic numbers are not exact, using round numbers. My understanding that this property's been for sale and listed for eight or nine months at $1.7 million. That is for the entirety of Unit 12, which we are buying a portion of. So, if you say 1.7 million, it's been on the market for that for nine months, if we reduce it by 20% using round numbers, you're going to reduce 1.7 by $340,000. That gets it down to $1.36 million. If I were to come to you then with a full-price offer that's 1.36 for what we're purchasing, and if I were to present it through my realtor, the district would have to pay a commission, which they're not paying now either. Typical real estate commission on big parcel of land is 10%. So, if you take 10% off of that, that's $136,000, that gets us down to 1.24 million. Our offer is $1,800,000. So, we are 144,000 plus or minus dollars less than full asking price. It's been asked for for nine months, it hasn't sold, and I would say that to anybody in here, I don't think any of you would go to a car dealer and look at the sticker and say, "I'm going to pay that number at the bottom." So, I don't want to pay full price either. My offer is about 12% less than full asking price, the way I do the math. So, I don't think, I think it's a fair offer. It's my highest and best offer. We have gone back and forth with the staff, we've had to, the number never changed, we had to keep the number the same, and we reduced it by 250-some lots, but the number still stayed the same. And then, we went back, and the district wanted a minimum of a certain amount, which also increased the offer again. So, it's been offered, counteroffered, and re-counteroffered already. And with me doing the math the way I do it and looking at the project the way I look at it, and with the fact that it has been for sale, I don't care what that appraiser says, reality is, people haven't been knocking down the door to buy it over the last nine months, and I'm not offering a heck of a lot less than what full asking price would have been. So, the short answer is no.
Okay. I just wanted to...
So, also, I wanted to mention that the appraisal was for 253 acres, and Raymond is offering to buy 214 acres, or 215 rounded, excuse me.
Something like that.
So, the appraisal was for the entire 253 acres.
Yeah, so roughly 20% less. All good?
Well, I...
For now.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I just want to be sure the board's got all of their questions and discussion done, and we will open it up to the public for their comments.
All right. Thank you.
I guess a key thing I heard this morning was the fact that in no way, shape, or form would the DOT allow a 1,350-unit expansion into Unit 12 because of the road situation. Is that, is that correct?
I'm not sure we can speak for the county, but it's probably a logical conclusion.
Okay, I guess, I guess my concern and the concern of a lot of people is how far this got, without any mention at any public meeting prior to this, that, I mean, there's been a lot of work done, obviously. There's been maps generated, there's a list of terms. So, I just wondered, Tanya, excuse me, can you share the timeline as when Raymond walked in the door till we get to this point, as to how this got to the point of a resolution to be voted on at the meeting without ever being mentioned at a public meeting? I know I had sent you a couple of emails mentioning this Unit 12 and about trying to advertise it, and you never indicated that it was being advertised, and I heard today that it had been for nine months. Where was it advertised?
It was advertised for sale on landsofamerica.com. Sorry. Or lands? Okay. So, it's, we got it out there and we listed it ourselves.
So, when did Mr. Horneck present his offer or come in the door and ask about buying this property?
Are you looking for specific dates? It's something I can email to you.
No, not specific, but...
Oh, okay.
Close to specific. So, how long has this process been going on? And I'm going to say in the dark, because that's where it's been. This is the first time it's been government in the sunshine, as far as I'm concerned, and that's a real problem, I think. It should have been in front of the board as at least a point of discussion before it got to this point. Yeah, I understand, there's probably been, there's been individual meetings with, between Mr. Horneck and the board members, is that true?
I met with him. I did too.
Yeah, individual meetings, probably in the last two weeks.
You did not?
In the last two weeks, no.
In the last two weeks, were those scheduled by someone, or did they take place at the, at the office?
Yes.
They did, and they were scheduled. So, in fact, what you're describing here is, and I want the minister to reflect this as close as he can, there's been a de facto meeting on this issue, and that is not right. And I don't, I don't believe that should ever happen.
I'm not sure I would in...
If you ever read, if you ever read of what a de facto meeting is, you'll see that exactly what happened was this is a de facto meeting.
I have no idea how the other board discussed the matter.
Somebody needs to educate themselves on it. There's also been a list of additional terms that have been put together. What about the individual lots that are owned by other people in the unit? How are you going to handle those? And bear with me if I need a little extra time here, because this is the first time this has ever been in front of the board. There's individual lots owned by other people? Does that include some of the lots that are Mr. Horneck's?
No.
No? Okay. Has there been any discussion with the DOT to even consider that, make sure this, and Raymond, I think, mentioned it, that 314 units probably will work with, because that gets pretty crowded, especially during school time, and it might be a problem. And I said, "That'll be, that'll be a deal-breaker if the DOT won't allow it," is that right?
Correct. Now, timelines, it's been about three weeks that I came to them.
Okay.
And I did hear about this project from Omar, I went to Omar's office about eight months ago, and he mentioned, "Hey, we're going to be getting into talking about what we just listed for this property, if you got any interest in that time, I have absolutely zero interest in it, because I didn't have a fund for it." We hadn't heard anything about it. I had somebody come to me and discuss, "You got a business with the property?" At that point, I came to Tanya, and I said, "Is that property still for sale?" And she said, "Yes." I said, "When I originally talked to Omar, I said, 'Can it be bought for around a million bucks?' And he says, 'Who knows?'" And he says, "You make an offer and, you know, see where it goes." And we presented a plan, we went back and forth on the plan slightly to make sure that we didn't have issues with individual property owners, and I wanted it done as quickly as possible. So, that's why it has been only three weeks since the original proposal was put together. The contract was put together within the first week and presented to Tanya, and at that point in time, we went over the, some of the details individually at the Sunland Lake office with the board members. This is what we're looking at purchasing. This is what we're looking at purchasing. This is how many lots it is. This is what the potential plan might be. And we will present to the board of directors an offer at the next meeting, which is where we're at now.
This, as far as servicing the, the 314 units that are, that are on the drawing board, the, I looked for, I looked for my old, my old document that Julian put together several years ago, but I was under the impression that this, at peak periods, that this, that this plant, the utility plant, was pretty much saturated, saturated with, I mean, it was full. And it wouldn't, it wouldn't, it wouldn't, 314 more units wouldn't work. But you're saying now that you have done an analysis on it, and it looks like it, it could happen without any expansion, any cost to the district?
Right now, we, I looked up the, the last 12 months of flow, because the plants recently, they've done some repairs to the outflow V-notch and the meters. They've got new meters on the plant. They've had them calibrated. And the district's been working the past two or three years on infiltration repairs. So basically leaks into the sewer system. And just over the last, I mentioned this earlier, just over the last 12 months, our infiltration, our flow's been reduced by 12 to 13%. Just from, the only thing that could, we account that to would be the infiltration repairs that we've been doing. Because the, the district hasn't shrunk any. I don't think we've had a mass exodus of people, and the use shouldn't have gotten down for nothing that we know of that would reduce it that much. So the best thing I can tell you is, we had, potentially had inaccurate data before. If we've had leaks, which I'm not saying it was inaccurate, it was, we gotta take on rainwater if it's coming in. We gotta count that going through the plant. It's just, it turns to sewage once it gets into the collection system, unfortunately. So if we can repair that and stop it, then we, then we get more capacity in our, in our system, so.
Okay. There, in one of the terms, you're deferring the, you're deferring the assessments for two years if this, if this happens. Deferred, does that mean that they should be, they'll be paid after that, at that period of time? I mean, they're not forgiven, it's not, it does not say forgiven, it says deferred.
It depends on the agreement that the board makes with the developer.
Okay, but what was presented here, it says deferred.
It would be deferred.
That's all I've got.
Thank you.
Tom Costy, resident. What do you, could you define the word deferred? Does that mean that the assessments that will go out at the end of this year, or that probably are already on its way out or out, that those will be paid? Or will they just not be invoiced or billed until a future date, beginning at a future date? Are we forgiving non-ad valorem taxes?
Assessments will be billed in November of, or October of 2021 with whatever rate as, you know, as adopted by the Board of Supervisors. They're gonna be billed.
Okay, at the full amount, as any empty lot in Sunland Lake.
Whatever rate is determined by the board, yes, sir.
Okay, okay. So they're not, they're not forgiven. They're, they're, they'll, they'll be owed for the year 2021, '22, '23, even if nothing happens as far as development until 2024, you will still have to go back and pay those. Is that correct?
Yes, that's correct. It's my understanding, Raymond Hornick again, it's my understanding that once we take possession of the property, the first thing we're going to do is something called vacating the plat. So we will not be paying on 1,300 individual lots. We will have one piece of property, and we will determine what that rate will be for the one piece of property until we replat it into the proposed development. At that point, once it's the proposed development is completed and platted and approved, at that point, it will be taxed at the same rate as any other properties in Sunland Lakes based on the calculations that currently exist. So if it's acreage, it's the same rate that they're paying for acreage on, what is that, Columbus Boulevard or something? There's some acreage lots out there. If, if they're individual lots, it'll be the same rate whether they're improved or unimproved, same as everybody else pays.
Okay.
But it will be based on what is replatted. Next year, it will be based on one piece of property, kinda like what was done with Tanglewood during their construction phase, but that has yet to be determined in future meetings here at the community center.
Okay, so now it's, it will be when, when you get started, this will be one strap?
Correct, yes. We have to vacate everything.
That means one vote, correct?
Yeah, that's one vote.
Not 1,300 votes?
Correct. And I do my best not to vote.
Okay, okay. Well, lots of people...
I don't want to get in the middle of...
A lot of people have said that in the past, where, "Don't worry, we're not gonna vote." Yeah, right.
Well, I, I think I have a history of avoiding voting the best that I can.
The county would require, if an expansion at Shoemaker takes place, the county requires that be paid for by the development or the developer. Is that correct?
Yeah, in the past, that's always been the case.
Yeah. As far as the sewage treatment is concerned, is the developer gonna have to pay for rerouting sewage, if necessary, to the north plant? Who's pay, who pays for that?
No, that is not a developer issue. We've talked about that for the last year. We do have monies built into our capital plan for our lift station, if, if we move forward with that.
Okay, you know, we've spoken about the back, I guess the statement from Drew was that the, there was some mistakes done in the previous study. It was signed by Dale Polston, Gator Howerton, and others, back in '08 through 2010, plus our registered engineer, who was our utilities director at the time. And their projections were that the, based on a 60 new water meters per year, that a new capacity, an increased capacity would be necessary by the year 2018. I don't know what, I can't recall what the number of meters were in '08, which was the basis for that study. But assume that was 10 years ago, and it's 60 per year, that would be 600, the math would be pretty easy. But also, the study indicated that the, the need would be to have facilities ready, and the projection was that it would be a five-year process from beginning to get permission or a commitment from the district that we're gonna do it, until a sewage, a completed sewage treatment capability is, is in place. It made a very strong case for the inadvisability of pumping waste materials uphill for sewage treatment. Part of that study indicated that all these lift stations, there's increased cost of operation, there's costs of replacement, there's costs of modernization, there's costs of additional crew to operate two plants like we have. They made a very strong justification for building a new facility in the southwest area of the district that would handle everything, including future development of the, of the district. The study indicated that the existing sewage piping could be used to a great extent because it would be gravity-fed. That new plant would be at a much lower, at a lower elevation than the ones up on US-27. There would be a reduction of complaints about smell and et cetera as the properties along 27 get developed commercially. There was also discussion about, at one point, about, about the property right next to Heartland Bank, about there being a new entrance into that area. And there were discussions with members of the Heartland Bank Board concerning the possibility of that. There was a verbal agreement that it's something that could be worked out. Do we intend to finalize a commitment to go ahead today without any of these other issues being discussed about? For, as, as an example, my understanding is, we've been paying taxes, the district has, to the county for property out in that southwest area, 180 lots or something like that, that is, was set aside by the district for a future waste treatment plant. Have we abandoned that at this point in time? Is that not part of the thinking about this? Sounds like we're considering putting more money into pumping, repumping, and elevation-wise, numerous points along the way to pump waste to the north plant?
The Unit 4 plant only has a 23% capacity on average. So yes, that is the plan at this point. We do still pay taxes on the Unit 6, Unit 7 properties.
Is there a reason for that? Why, why are we doing that? We let all the others go, but we kept those.
Right, we kept those, we've kept other properties in the district for district use. We haven't let those go.
So that's still intended for a future waste treatment plan, is that correct?
When was that study done? 12 years ago? I, I don't, I don't have an answer.
Yeah, you didn't look back?
I have no, there's no plans for a wastewater treatment plant.
You've never read that, that, it's a 12 or 13 pages?
I have not, I have not.
You have not read that 12 or 13 pages about the waste treatment? It was, again, done by who's current county engineer, Dale Polston, the founder of Polston Engineering, yada, yada. Okay. My recommendation, I really think that this ought to be tabled at this point. There's no breakneck speed to get this done. I think it ought to be tabled, giving the board, board members a chance to talk to the public, make them more aware of all these, these, the thoughts that have gone into this. I don't see that anybody would be hurt by delaying this for one or two more meetings to give the public an opportunity to weigh in on it. Thank you.
Thank you. Everybody else?
Good morning, Larry Bertido. First of all, I want to thank the board for answering the questions that I presented to you. I appreciate it. There's a lot more understanding of what's going on now that you've asked those questions, so I appreciate it. There is a note in there that said that, something about it's not feasible. But then I looked, and if we have these lots, we got these lots, and I think Mr. Hornick is correct in the fact that he has in the past put in the roads, the sewer, the utilities, he's put those in, so I certainly agree with Mr. Hornick on that. Where do we sit? What is the district thinking if we get 1,300, 1,500 lots, whatever it is, we're going to have these various type of residents in there? What type, how does that affect our marketing plan? Has anybody thought about that?
My personal opinion is it would be a big plus.
Pardon me?
My personal opinion is that it'll be a big plus for marketing, to have that, that type of availability of housing for the people that want to come here to Sunland Lake, which I think, right now, there's a big demand for that.
And I, I, I agree with your, with your comment, but again...
If you're asking, have you taken it into a marketing plan? No, we have not. Is that what you're asking? No. We haven't gotten that far yet.
Right, okay. How soon would you expect to have a marketing plan for that?
First, we've gotta find out if he can do it.
Right, assuming we can do it.
Assuming he can do it, then we'd probably would have to sit down and discuss what phases, how he's gonna build it, so we know what we can even offer. I mean, I don't know if he's doing town hose, towns for us.
Yeah, it's a year, not two years.
Would you think, then, that legitimately, before we, before Mr. Hornick broke down, it'd probably be close to, to a year, somewhere in that?
Probably a year and a half to two years, yeah.
One and a half to two. Okay, thank you very much.
Cliffwood residents, I'd like to commend Tanya and her team and the, and the board for bringing this along so rapidly. I think it's important to understand that a lot of businesses don't like to do businesses with entities like us because of an inability of the organization to make decisions without getting into all kinds of micromanagement kind of issues. We've been looking for this kind of opportunity for a long time, and it seems to me that we ought to put a full court press on bringing this to a reality. Mr. Hornick has arranged, let me back up a little bit, there's some really significant risks involved in taking on a project like this. Mr. Hornick has arranged for the backing to make this possible. Those people aren't gonna sit around very long if they perceive that the Board of Supervisors and citizens of Sunland Lake are gonna dither and dither and dither and, and ask questions to the third decimal point before they get anything done. They'll lose patience, and that'll be the end of it. So my suggestion to the board, Tanya and your team, is to push this ahead as fast as we can and make it a reality. Thank you.
I'm kinda new in the neighborhood. Mr. Hornick, that's you? Okay, yeah. I've only been here 17 years. The problem I can, I can understand in what he's going through right now, because this is the first time I've heard about this plan on this Unit 12, which is probably a great idea of really improve the enlarging of the community and all the benefits that goes with it. But I think flying the ointments is the in and out to Shoemaker or Sunland Boulevard. And if he doesn't get that, that road out there, I think the project may go down the tubes. And as Michael was saying that, about Shoemaker and the extension someday, there might be a superhighway out there. I don't think we're gonna see it. But I can remember years ago, because it's gravel road down the end, and the county wanted to have us pay a certain percentage of, or a lot of it. And we didn't go along with it. Okay, fine, so it never got resurfaced, and I think it cost the county 40, 50,000 bucks to maintain that gravel road. So anyhow, this, there's a problem dealing with Shoemaker, which I can understand if you try to make it a four-lane highway or a three-lane highway. So the other type of things, that the pitfalls are natural, the infrastructure, the water sewage, is it gonna be capable? You mentioned about a redirection of a lift station. So, I mean, it's a big project, and I highly endorse it, and I hope it goes through, and I hope everybody gets their best deal possible. Thank you.
Any other public comment? Okay, seeing none, I'll bring it back to the board for further discussion.
I got you.
Please.
So, let me see if I can understand this, in my terms, which is the simplest. He's gonna give us a half a million dollars, we're not really gonna pay anything. He's gonna take care of all the infrastructure, he's gonna pay the county all the taxes, and we have a half a million dollars up front. Correct?
Correct.
As far as the water treatment, redirecting of... As far as the water treatment, redirecting of the, the flow that we've been talking about, my understanding is that would cost about a half a million dollars, is that correct? Isn't that correct?
The lift station is budgeted...
I'm just repeating what I think I was...
The lift station is budgeted at 150,000, is that correct? In the, in the, in a couple of years, we have it in our capital.
I thought you said... I know, but to redirect the flow...
I did say 250, but I looked and it's 150.
Okay.
Yeah, it's 150, so I, I don't have those numbers.
Paul Park, to redirect the flow is about a half a million dollars?
It could be up to a quarter million, just depending on the size of forced mains.
But theoretically, if we get his 500,000, if we need to do that, we have the money for it.
Correct.
Oh, correct, yes, correct, yes.
If we're smart and put it someplace, we can't touch it.
But I believe we add a lot of it budgeted anyway, but, yeah.
Then, okay, then he's also going to give us, which is now 2,700 dollars a, a unit, is that how you call it, and to get hookup? And that's going to go into the utility fund, and that could be somewhere in the area of 700, 600, 700,000, once it's all built?
Potentially, once, once everything's full built, maybe if we, I think, I think we're at 300 and something units, right, full build out?
314 is...
So, yeah, potentially, potentially that much money.
600, 700,000 we'll get for that. And then also, once it's all built up, we're going to get somewhere in the area of, and I know this is a controversial number, somewhere between 200 and 260,000 dollars of revenue for assessments every year. Right?
Correct.
So, have I got that right? So, is the question the district, anything that I haven't mentioned? Okay.
Nothing that I know of, I mean, is there, nothing that I know of.
Nothing that you know of.
Nothing that I know of.
Drew, anything that we don't know of?
It's, there's, the only thing I would, the only thing I would say is, our impact or plant, we have capacity now, but that's always going to be something we got to keep in mind. But we're, we're okay right now for his development, like, it's not going to, they're not going to fill up the whole place in five years, so I guess it would be great if we did, but hopefully we'd have enough revenue. But it's always future, whenever we run out of capacity or anything, or needs expansion, that's, but we're talking...
So maybe we take this 500,000, put it in a separate account, can't be touched, in case of need for to redirect the flow or something?
I don't know if we can do, I mean, that could be overturned in matter we did it, but, you know, it's not, I don't think we'd spend it, I don't think we'd spend it, I don't know if you can mandate it.
Why not?
We can, it'll be turned over by the board.
Can we mandate that, can we do that?
If the board changes, the, any future board could change that.
Yeah, that could change.
I mean, unless you were to lock it, unless you were to like lock it away in a 10-year CD or something like that, even then, a future board could take it out with, under some sort of penalties. But I don't think there's any way to require that it be held for a certain thing for a, you know, an undisclosed or an indeterminate amount of time. The, the one thing, I haven't seen the proposed build out, but based on what I'm seeing here, there's talk about HOAs and potentially private stuff, and I know Mr. Hornick wants to talk to it, but in the, in the eventuality, or if, in the case that there are in fact some public roads, once they're built, the district will have the responsibility to maintain them as it maintains all its public roads. But if they're privatized roads, then those would be held by, you know, dealt with by the HOA and...
Well, any event, so we're going to get somewhere around 500,000, 700,000, and 250,000, 240,000 dollars a year, and we're not paying anything. Right now, we're getting zero. Okay, thank you.
I don't have anything.
Okay, anyone else?
I would like to say that the individual meetings that went on, based on my understanding from Tanya and Mr. Hornick and the individual board members, there's nothing wrong with those individual meetings. No problem with those individual.
I think the, the goal that we had when we foreclosed on unit 12 was to find a way to get it back to where it was generating revenue, which it wasn't. This is a long-term approach, but I think it's a good one. I've, I've promoted in almost two years I've been on the board that we need to find a developer who could develop it. I'd love to find a developer who could develop all of, of Sun and Lake, but Mr. Hornick has essentially been doing that over the years, and putting him in charge of this project is, I think, a positive. I do think that, you know, in the, in the short term, we're fine on the, on the sewer system. I think this would be a good time to dust off that old study and see if it makes more sense to build a new plant. You know, dust it off, bring it back to the board for review and discussion as to whether it's something we want to look at as opposed to the lift stations. I don't, I know I haven't looked at it, and I know that in the, in the two-plus years I've been on, or almost two years I've been on the board, that I've expressed a concern that if we do fully develop Sun and Lake, we're going to have to do something about the sewer system. So I'd love to see what that report had to say. So I think we should dust that off. But I, I, I'm not sure I've got anything else to say at this point.
I'm having trouble finding the downside here. If we approve this today, we essentially give Mr. Hornick the go-ahead to start his due diligence process, which is going to cost him money, and then postponing it for two more weeks probably accomplishes nothing except to slow him down, so I personally am in favor of moving forward with this project officially today.
One final thing I'll say real quick, is the, the proposed counteroffer used to be larger, you know, with the, there was an initial draft contract, and then I guess after some of the discussions between Tanya and Mr. Hornick and these individual board members, a revised contract was given. The items that are listed in this counteroffer are not make or break issues to me, they're just, if I was drafting the contract, are things that I would not, I'm not a big fan of arbitration provisions, that's why I would ask that be removed. I'm not, 120 days for a feasibility study is, just seems long to me, but I don't have a heartbreak over, or heartache over any of these things that are in the counteroffer. Just in a perfect world, that's how I would have had it drafted. So, if the, if the board wishes to approve the contract as drafted, I don't have a significant issue with it.
I'm sorry, can you clarify, you're saying we should take out the counter proposals?
You know, I'm just saying that if you, if, because whenever a counteroffer is made, that nullifies the original offer. So if the, if the, if the board wishes to accept the offer as presented, I don't have a problem with that. But if we make a counteroffer, then Mr. Hornick gets to decide whether or not he wants to accept that counteroffer, and if he says, well, I don't want to accept it, we can't go back and go, oh, well, we'll take the original offer, because that, the counteroffer nullifies that. So, I'm just, in a, in a perfect world, this is how I would have, the, the counteroffer is how I would have drafted the contract to best protect the district, but in, in reality, it's not a, it's not huge issues, you know, that to me that are make or break issues, it's just that's how I would have preferred to seen it drafted. I'm just not, I'm not a big fan of arbitration.
Have we discussed with Mr. Hornick his willingness to accept the counterproposal?
I think he told us already that he wasn't.
He told us.
Yes, the answer was no to, to that. And to ease everybody's mind, if it does, the contract that is presented is a Florida Realtors Board Certified Contract. If any of you have purchased a piece of land in the state of Florida, 90% of you have signed that same contract. If you purchased a home in the state of Florida, 90-plus percent of you used a Florida Realtor Board Certified Contract as well. There's nothing special in there, there's no shenanigans, it's as simple, I tried to make this as simple and upfront and as easy as possible, and if that's good enough for 90% plus of the sales in the state of Florida, I don't see why it wouldn't be sufficient and adequate here.
Cliffwood resident, what would you hope to get from Mr. Hornick in terms of a counteroffer? 10%? 25%?
I, I don't know if that, I don't know if we're even trying to do that, Cliff, so I don't know what your point is. We're trying to get to a vote, and that's...
My point is, if you're thinking about 10, 15, 20%, that's, that's like one year's assessments on these properties down the road. Let's get this, let's not quibble on the second, we have a, we have, I think, a good-faith Trying to extract another 5%, 10% out of this deal, I think is self-defeating. You know, I'm sure Mr. Hornick has what we would call a drop-dead price, and is probably not very much higher than what he has offered, already offered, because there's a lot of risk involved in this project for him and his investors. And we ought not to forget that if somebody's taking on a lot of risk, they're entitled to a significant reward.
We haven't heard what the counteroffer is.
There's, there's no count, there's no counteroffer. I mean, all David...
There is no counteroffer in the resolution?
Oh, the counteroffer. I'm sorry, I thought you were talking about dollars. The, the counteroffer was taking it from 120 days due diligence to 90. Mr. Hornick has explained why he needs 120 days, and that's fine. The, the second item was litigation versus arbitration. Again, right, David?
Correct, correct.
So it's already in the standard language, which is, which is fine. And then...
Removal those lots, have we dealt with that?
We, we did that, actually. We fixed, yeah, we, so that, that was the counteroffer.
So it was, was not a counteroffer in terms of trying to get more money?
No, no, not at all.
And he wants 120 days. If we delay this two to four weeks for another meeting, he gets it automatically. We get, we get the 100, we get the, well, you want it, you want it shortened, but the 90 days to him would be 120 if, if this is approved after the election instead of right now.
It, it doesn't get him anything, because he's not moving forward with any further studies until he's got a commitment.
I understand, which he wouldn't be one way or the other. Thank you.
Okay, so just, just, I'm, I'm sorry, I need a further clarification, because I was, I was, I was not clear on this counteroffer and the attachment as far as the Exhibit A removal of lots. Did we remove the lots, you said?
We did.
So that was accepted?
Yes, it was just an error on the map, remember the, the lots to the left side of Ortega? Yeah, we fixed that.
Okay, so that is fixed, okay. Okay, any further, board? Call the question.
Well, no, no, hold on, because the, the way the resolution is drafted is that we're submitting, it's based on the counteroffer. So it needs, we need to amend the motion to accept the contract as presented.
So moved. Seconded.
Now we need a vote on that, and we need to have discussion and public discussion on that.
Okay. So it's been moved and seconded to accept the offer as amended.
As drafted, as, as presented, yeah, as drafted.
Okay, any further public discussion? No more board discussion, call the question.
Supervisor Herrick?
Yes.
Supervisor Gilpin?
Yes.
Supervisor Brooks?
Yes.
Supervisor Branson?
Yes.
President Hotteling?
Yes.
Okay, now one more vote as accepting the resolution as amended.
I made that motion.
Seconded.
Any public discussion? Call the question.
Supervisor Brooks?
Yes.
Supervisor Branson?
Yes.
Supervisor Herrick?
Yes.
Supervisor Gilpin?
Yes.
President Hotteling?
Yes. Okay, the next item on the agenda is 5B, Resolution Number 2020-10934, a resolution of Sun and Lake, a Sebring Improvement District to award the bid for the new district golf cart fleet designated as RFP 20-06, to Easy Go as a lease purchase with trade-in for 38, 381,105 dollars over three years.
I guess that's a bit not important.
Is there a motion?
So moved. Seconded.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Can we get a summary from staff?
I guess they don't realize, we got 500,000, but we're going to spend 600,000, but it's not important. So, so we've talked about this a couple of times in prior meetings, as this current year's budget, this is RFP 2006 for the golf cart lease renewal. Over these past few months, we've talked about seeing what the bids come in on different options, lead acid and lithium options, and different payment structures for the lease term. We've also talked about possibly entertaining the idea of keeping our current fleet and having a maintenance agreement with that. Unfortunately, we could not find any vendors who were willing to honor a maintenance agreement. We also did some internal assessments on batteries and how much cost we would need to put into it. Based on the proposal, we are getting 240,000 dollars in trade-in, which is 2,400 dollars in, per cart, which is extremely high compared to years past. There's obviously a market demand currently for used carts at this moment. So, in the RFP, I think we went a little bit overboard and asked for multiple scenarios, so we've run the numbers on probably six or seven different scenarios, going from continuing to dollar-buy them out with a purchase agreement involved, or considering just fair market value leasing. In our studies, in our assessments, we found that the fair market value, although it's more inclined to what we actually do, which is continually flip the carts and never really utilize the dollar buyout, unfortunately, the fair market value gives us a consideration or trade-in value for the carts that is substantially lower than the fair market value. Based on all our analysis, we did provide three recommendations for the board, all of them being pretty much comparative in total cost. Just some of the, the lithium options just provide some energy savings that we're projecting, and they also provide the flexibility, in some years, you're going to have no payments in terms of cash flow purposes for budget. So we did provide those three recommendations. Our first recommendation is the three-year dollar buyout for lithium, which is a total cost of 621,105 dollars. Easy Go will turn around and give us a check for 240,000 dollars, making the net cost 381,105, and we'll use those 240,000 dollar proceeds to apply to the first and partial second-year payment. So really, technically, in year one, the district will have no payment, even though we have 140,000 dollars budgeted for this year. Questions?
Say something funny, like, how are you going to guarantee that money will be there next year?
What money?
I'm not sure I understood the joke.
Because we couldn't freeze the, we couldn't do anything with the 500,000, because the board made it here. So he's holding money for next year, I think.
Well, no, he's not holding money, he has money in the capital budget for next year.
I person, two weeks ago, we were contacted that we had a cart problem, and that we didn't have enough carts. And that was for this Saturday and a Saturday two weeks from tomorrow, to my understanding. We resolved the issue that was coming up this Saturday by talking to Cecile and having her move the wood through to an afternoon shotgun instead of the morning shotgun. However, in further discussions, I asked that they talk to Easy Go with the idea that they, under their contract, are committed to providing us up to another additional 50 units. Thus far, they have not given us a commitment to give us additional carts. Now, Mike has told me that they would...
I thought I read something. No, go ahead, I'm sorry.
I don't have, when I asked that we get 25 additional carts starting in the first of November, their response is they don't have the carts. Now, they may get the cart... Now, they may get the carts, but they may not. And now we're suggesting that, well, if we get through November, we'd be all right in December, because the play is less. So I'm not sure now where the problem is with having enough carts. But what I do have a problem with is somebody that says they have a contract with us that we can provide, they can provide us an additional 50 units, and then when we ask for it, they can't provide it. And yet now you're wanting me to sign a new contract with that same group. And I have a problem with it. I think that's, if they're not gonna live up to that, this contract, why should I go to the next contract?
Correct me if I'm wrong, wasn't I told that we, it's in there?
It's in there, but they won't provide the carts.
Right. Oh, you didn't tell me that part.
So currently, Easy Go does not have carts for the supplemental part of their contract. If we wanted carts today, they have zero. So the best promise we can get is that we would have carts available in November, just as Mr. Herrick said. Now, the busiest, as we get busier, yeah, we do have potential for more issues. And we would obviously like to have the carts as soon as possible, but they are currently unavailable, as there is no carts in the market anywhere, which is the same reason why we're seeing a higher value for our trade-in. Now, I totally understand Mr. Herrick's point. It's very frustrating for me, as it is for him and you guys, as we need those. And we're definitely gonna work to get them here as soon as possible, but that is the scenario. Easy Go does not have carts in their yard to ship to us for the supplemental cart rental. And foreseeably, it would be mid-November, which is two months earlier than we would normally ask for them.
Are we gonna have a cart issue on the Veterans Day tournament? Or a cut outing?
It is definitely possible. Just depends on what we do, but it is definitely possible, yes.
So how does Easy Go respond to their breach of contract? Are they seeing it as a breach of contract? It doesn't sound like-
I have, I have informed them of that scenario, and, I mean, there's not a reply in regards to a breach of contract, just that this is when we can fulfill the contract.
Are any of the three companies able to give us extra carts?
No. Or other companies that I have, or other folks that I have spoken to.
Yeah, for what it's worth.
They're just not there.
I was up at Arches last week, and we were talking about carts and shorties. Yamaha and Club Car do not have carts either. The people who are refurbishing carts are buying whatever they can get, one at a time. There are no carts in the system, other than new ones.
I've had several smaller companies come and beg for us to try to sell them some carts, and, you know, obviously, they're not mine to sell, but, you know, there's, everybody's looking for carts right now. There's none out there.
Is this tied to the COVID situation? Have they given us any rationale?
I would believe that is correct. Now, a part of it, in an explanation from Easy Go, it ties into the actual rollout of their lithium program being three to four years ago, and then lasting five years. They're not getting the normal turnaround with the three-year lead acid turnaround, so there's a little bit of gap, so the combined has created an issue, at least on their end. Now, the other companies haven't rolled out the same issue, so I would say most of it's due to COVID for them as well.
I know when I talked to Mike, I used to be involved in getting golf courses for our association, and I don't mind if you get carts, but we gotta take a look at, did you tell me that it was delivery fee plus 25 a month for these?
That is the current contract that will end at the end of December. Now, the new, this contract is different. If I am correct, it's $100 a month for the cart, but the delivery fee is different. So they're not necessarily apples and apples, but that is correct. So the rental fee compared to what a normal course would do for supplemental carts for one tournament is severely less.
Right, well, you just gotta be careful, as far, and I know you will, that we have an outing that we're charging $25 for, and we bring in a cart that costs us $100, that, that's, it's just not acceptable. I mean, you have to, and I don't think I have to pre-say it to you, but you don't bring in carts, you just can't have the outing, if that's what it comes to, or their outing has to be a certain amount of ones, but, and that's the way when we negotiated it. Because you're gonna ask anybody to, they were giving us an $18, $20 rate, and, you know, we wanted 120 players, well, if they don't have enough carts, they're not gonna bring in carts for 25 bucks and charge 18. I mean, you're not gonna do that, so you just have to be careful, and I'm not, I know you will, in that we don't buy $100 worth of carts and rent them once in a month-
Right.
-for 18 bucks.
Okay, no, I totally, yeah, no, yeah, I understand.
Have we looked into any reciprocal agreements with other clubs to potentially borrow when we have a big event, access that they might have?
We, in August, when we have those two big tournaments, you know, the other local courses are very generous to contribute to those charities that, when we use extra carts, but when we get into this time of year, everybody's using-
Nobody's got extra.
They just don't have them. So, I mean, everybody else is in the same boat we are. You know, everybody else is, and that's nationwide, everybody's looking for more carts. Obviously, if it gets colder in New York, they won't need them, but, you know, it's not an isolated problem here.
How long do you anticipate this going on, or is it just the way it is now going forward?
So, well, and I'm just saying this in absolute worst-case scenario, when, when our new fleet comes in, we, and we're selling back to them 100 carts, well, we can keep 25 of those carts here. They just don't, they can take 75 on their way out, and 25 of them become our rental. Does that make sense? We can, that's worst-case scenario. If they can't provide us carts-
Well, it sounds like, isn't that where we are? I mean, that's what you're telling us, right?
They're rolling the dice.
We're at the worst-case scenario, no?
If, with Mike's point, if we don't find it feasible, if we're not having issues, we can wait until our fleet, our current fleet itself, when they buy them back from us, we can keep 25 of those on the extended lease, and they could stay on property. 75 can leave, and they'll pick up the other 25 at the end of season.
When exactly is this transaction, where we get the new ones? What, we talking January 1, we talking November?
No, we're looking right around the first of the year.
First of the year?
Yes.
So right now, we have 100 carts, and that's it? Until between now and January, because we can't get anybody else?
And the goal right now is to get supplemental carts in November.
I thought you said there's none available.
There is none currently available. We were told that there will be some available in November. That's where we're currently at.
All right, so if you play the worst-case scenario, and there are no carts available, what happens then?
Well, you know, if I get to November, you know, and things slow down kind of right before Thanksgiving a little bit, if we're making that far, and I don't foresee any issues, then why spend the money? I'll just tell them, no, I don't need them yet, and I'll wait. But if we can get them the first of November, and I can use them those first two weeks, it could be feasible.
The whole point's mute if there's no carts available. So I guess I'm asking you, take the worst-case scenario, there's no carts available between now and January 1. If you run short of carts, what are you gonna do on anything? I mean, you gotta have, you have to have a thought process of-
Right, and this is-
If this happens, this is what I'm doing.
Right, and that's, you know, some of the scenarios that I've presented in the past few weeks. They're not necessarily, I mean, unless you're considering Craig's point. It's a separate discussion than an RFP bid. I mean, those, we're gonna have that problem, no matter who brings us our new fleet. I don't know if that should hold up this particular vote, unless, again, you're considering Craig's point.
Well, it's a silly thing to have in the agreement, if they're not gonna honor it. That's, that's the problem.
You know, obviously, yeah, I, no, I agree, and they will honor it, it's just, obviously, it's two months earlier than previously, and it's delayed. I mean, obviously, we've decided that we wanted them now, and they're not available yet. So it's not that they don't want to honor it, it's just that it's gonna be delayed.
Yeah, I hear you, but I understand their delay has the potential of costing us money for something we counted on in the contract.
Correct, and just to, speaking of a breach, if it's, if these, if there's no carts available anywhere, then it becomes an impossibility. So if the carts that they, and I'm not aware of the exact terms of the contract, if there's a timeframe, if they say they're gonna turn around and give us carts within 24, 48, 72 hours, if there's anything like they're in that. If carts do become available, and Easy Go says, we cannot provide the carts, and we have the opportunity to get carts from somewhere else, then we can get those carts. That, once there's an expense associated, that's when we can go to Easy Go and say, you're in breach, we've had, we've suffered this expense, and now we want, we want you to compensate us, because we had to suffer through this expense.
Okay.
But until there's an expense, there's not really a breach.
But let's say that we haven't got a place to even spend the money to get the carts, and we have a loss of revenue. We can't go after them for the loss of revenue?
Most likely, that's gonna be in the contract that there's, I'd have to look at the contract itself, but 90% of contracts like that contain a, you know, removal of any sort of loss of revenue.
I, I think I'd like to have us look at whether or not we can get that in the contract. I'd also have, have a question as to whether it would be possible to get a delivery of 25 of the new fleet early, as opposed to some other, so that we could have 25 early to get some extra carts in. Is that a possibility?
That, that's a very good observation, but no, the, they're three months out now, so if I told them on Monday that this was going through, or the Saturday for that matter, these cars will not be built until late December. They're, that's where they're at in their build docket.
Are they thinking they can provide 100 units by the first of January?
Yes. Provided, provided we get on the build docket today.
Have they agreed to lease back the 25 that we talked about?
Yes, they have agreed that if, if we don't have carts prior to that January 1 number, we can lease back 25 of our current fleet.
At what cost?
The contracted price, which would be the $100 a month.
I'll just reiterate again, it's, it's not that they can get us 25 carts. We don't want them. If, if they're gonna cost us more than what we're charging somebody for these outings, I mean, that's, that's, I don't really care too much if they give it to us, but if we can't do it, the person that wants an outing's gotta cut their outing. Now, that's, it's simple.
No, I understand, and a lot of times, when those outings happen, if you're overcapacity and you rent carts, that's just a pass-through, you would just make them pay that extra. And probably for the majority of our need for extra carts is not particularly pertaining to an outing. It pertains to regular, normal green feed play when we get in our typical season, mid-January through, you know, mid-March to April, when we're doing 500 rounds, up to 500 rounds a day, I've seen, that's when you're gonna need those supplemental carts the most.
Yeah, but isn't this thing Saturday?
We're all, we're good for this Saturday.
Because of Cecile doing what she's doing, but-
Correct.
We just gotta, if we can't work those, all I'm saying is, we gotta just cut to, if somebody come in and wants an outing here, we gotta, you only, if you only got so many carts, that's all they can have.
And we were able to work through this Saturday without incurring any extra cost, and all of our members are taken care of. And we have one other one towards the end of the month that everything should be fine for. Mr. Herrick brought up the Veterans Tournament could be a possibility, and at that point, we would go through our due diligence as you state, yes.
There's really two conversations here. One, do we want to do this contract as it's written?
That is correct.
And the other question is, what are we gonna do if we run short of carts? Because there's no additional carts available. Agreed?
Yeah.
So should we decide on the contract first, and then we can have the other conversation?
I agree.
Yeah, the issue I have with the contract, is what Mr. Herrick brought up, is that they are currently not honoring the commitment to get us 50 extra carts if we need them. And there doesn't seem to be any recourse when they fail to do that. So I think, you know, as much as I would like to be able to approve the agreement, and I've always had a good working relationship with Easy Go, obviously Pebble Beach had a little more clout with Easy Go than Sun and Lake does. But the, you know, why would we put together an agreement that has a clause in it that is non-enforceable?
But why would we, and I agree, Neil, but why would we even want them carts? It's the cost that they're gonna charge us. We're not, I don't think we'd want them here.
At $100 a month and charging $18 a day, it doesn't take long to take care of the $100.
But, but does it make more sense, if we can buy out these carts for a dollar, does it make more sense to just buy them for a dollar and have them as reserves?
So what you would rather see, correct me if I'm wrong, is have it written into the contract, and if they can't deliver it, they can't deliver it? Not, which is the way to go.
No, I'm, I'm looking for something in the agreement that has a penalty if they can't deliver.
I mean, we put in the contract, there's no guarantee, right? Right?
I'd have to look at the contract. I don't, I don't know the, I haven't reviewed the entire contract.
No, I'm just saying, if we say we want to rent up to 50 carts, and it's $100 for a month, which is what it says, although it wasn't filled in a dollar amount, but if we fill in the dollar amount, and they, and they can't deliver it-
Yeah, then we could, yeah, that's what we need to happen, and this resolution allows, basically what this resolution does is it's giving power to Tanya, as general manager, to negotiate a contract. So based on what's being said here, is I could sit down with her, and we could write in or put in there as a part of a proposal, if this situation arises again, and they are unable to, you know, provide us the extra carts we need, here is the penalty, there's a penalty clause, and they're gonna pay us X number of dollars. So we could definitely do that, even approving this as currently drafted.
That would make sense to me.
I mean, I'm just trying to figure out a way to get the contract approved, so we can get carts in January. And I agree with what everybody's saying, that we'll need extra carts, and-
All I, my whole crux of the complaint is that they're not honoring the contract, and I have a hard time renewing the contract with a person that doesn't abide by the contract. That's my issue.
And I guess my further point would be, does it make sense to buy out 25 of our old carts, keep them as reserves when we need extra carts, and say, since you can't provide the extra carts that we need, we want a better price?
I think with the, because we've talked about this too internally, the problem is with golf, is there's a demand during certain months, and then there's no demand in the summer. So ideally, and my thought process is, we'd only lease 60 carts, because that's what we need all year round, and we'd rent 60 during season, and we'd pay a lot less for that six-month timeframe. Unfortunately, we have this demand, so if I was Easy Go, we would, we could lease 120 and never have this problem, and never need a rental. And it would cost us about $100 a month for 60 months to have additional carts in our fleet. The question is, do we want to pay for that, because we're gonna have 20 or 30 carts during the summer sitting and not being used. So you overpay during the summer, and then you use them during the busy months.
We do that now, don't we?
I mean- Correct, we just, we just always relied on being able to rent 10, or 15, or 20 carts in January when we need them. Now we need them a little bit sooner, but we've always played that game, if you want to call it, is being able to rely on that versus renting or leasing 110 carts and never relying on rentals.
Right, but my, my point is, if we buy 25 carts at a dollar apiece, we're sitting on $25. A few repairs if we need them over time, but if they're not being used all the time, it's only gonna be getting them ready to go when we're ready to go, and that's a lot less than $100 a month.
Sure, well, on, on that point, Neil, so if we were gonna lease that cart for $100 a month, and we leased it for, just say, three months, that's $300. If we go to trade in a cart that we purchased for a dollar three or four months from now, we could potentially lose- could potentially lose $600 or $700 per cart in trade value.
What's the buyout per cart?
It's a dollar, but we're, we're going to get $2,400 for that cart now. And when the demand for carts goes down, the price for carts goes down. So we could potentially lose
$6,000.
You're talking 50,000 if we, if we keep 25 carts, that's 50 or 60,000 that they won't be giving us.
Correct.
Could be.
And then we could sell them later, but it's going to be at, it's not going to be at $2,400. It could be 12, it could be 15, 16. It's not going to be higher, for sure. That's a risk.
Well, I don't know what to, I don't know.
Yeah, I, it's, it's a lofty place to be in a contract. And like I say, I've, I've always had good relationships with Easy Go, so it's hard for me to believe that we're in this situation, but I'm, I'm believing you that we're in this situation.
Yeah, I've, I've worked with Easy Go for 15 years and I've never had an issue with them with any of the fleets that they've ever provided to any of the clubs that I've ever worked at, minus normal, normal stuff. Obviously, this is an unprecedented year. I understand the problem. I don't, I, I think if, if we were to not honor our contract with them, with somebody else, it's going to cost, it's, it's a negative for us too, because it's going to cost us more money to do it, you know, just to penalize them.
And have we talked to them that this is a unique year, that going forward, they don't anticipate it being a problem?
Yeah, exactly.
I mean, they gave us a price.
They gave us a price, but with a, a term that they're not complying with for this year, which is, is a concern. But again, Easy Go has a good reputation. They're saying this is a unique year. We all know this is a unique year. 2020 is about as unique a year as I've ever lived. So with their assurance that this is a, a one-time problem, I'm okay with the, with the deal as presented. And hopefully, they can come through for whatever our needs are this year as soon as they can. Okay? Any other board discussion?
Yeah, wait a minute. I want to hear what, I mean, Craig's unhappy, and that's fine, we all are, but have you got an idea?
It doesn't look like it can be resolved, to be fair. And if Easy Go is, I know, we currently have Easy Go, I have an Easy Go. I like Easy Go. It has the capacity. I'm reluctant to do business with people that don't honor the contract. It is a unique thing. In fact, I'm going to be talking about it later. So with that, I can approve it.
Okay. Any public comment?
Yes.
Seeing none, I bring it back to the board. Any further comment, or shall we call the question? Chrissy, call the question.
Supervisor Branson?
Yes.
Supervisor Herrick?
Yes.
Supervisor Gilpin?
Yes.
Supervisor Brooks?
Yes.
President Hoteling?
Yes. Continuing on with the agenda, any add-on items?
None.
Petitions and communications?
The two that we received were from Mr. Halbuck and Mr. Potato.
That we've kind of discussed through with them.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Staff reports?
Yes.
All right, supervisors, just a few things since we've last met. Just an update on the golf course. I'm sure you've seen some of the coquina at the ends of the cart path. A few of those projects are still going on, but they've completed quite a few. All of the tree, the debris from all the tree work has now been mulched. That mulch is going to be used on areas that we do not typically budget for ground cover. So it's just ground cover we're going to use in areas that we don't normally spend money on. As you know, it's, it's been pretty rainy the last couple of weeks. What that does is especially, well, it's, it's pretty much on deer run with the, the greens on deer are the champion Bermuda grass is pretty susceptible to algae when it's wet and overcast. And they've had, had a little bit of pressure with that over the last week. They have applied fungicides. Talking with Earl, as long as, as we get some sunlight and a little bit drier weather, he doesn't foresee any issues. It is membership time, so I do have a couple of membership updates. As of, from September 1st to date, we have sold 190 memberships at a total of $676,000. Compared to this time last year, we had sold 216 memberships at a total of $732,000. That difference is $56,000 or about 7% behind last year's pace.
What do you attribute that to?
Most of it is snowbirds coming down late. Obviously, none of the Canadians. A lot of times, like in, in years past, when there's no issues going on, the membership date is October 1st. And a lot of snowbirds, including Canadians, paid for a full-year membership, they would mail those in. Well, a lot of the folks are holding onto those right now with the uncertainty. So although I do forecast for sure less than last year, I think part of that decline is, is, is most of that. But it's at about 7% behind pace right now. And 676 is about 60% of our total budget for memberships. Not freaking out yet. We currently have 50 active 50% off memberships. That is today. 15 of those memberships have expired in the last couple of weeks, of which nine of those have rejoined under a regular membership.
Nine out of what?
Nine out of 15 that have currently expired.
Really?
Three more people that are in 50% off memberships have already rejoined before their membership has even lapsed. So they actually have another week or two on their half-off membership and they've already rejoined. So we've already rejoined 12 of our 50% off membership program, which is actually ahead of what we anticipated. So it's, it's doing well. And we've signed up 10 more since, in, in July and August, we signed up 10 more. So that doesn't necessarily all fall into, to my total count that I did since September 1st. So that program is, is, is doing what it's supposed to do. It's actually working a little bit better than anticipated. I know we've signed up several members that used to be at the Steven Golf Club. I know their conditions have declined a little bit and we've had six or seven memberships from there. I know we've signed up at least one membership from Highlands Ridge. They have come over to join us and, and, and there might be more. That's just the one that I know of and there may be more to follow. I know their membership program, at least it used to start in November, so some of their memberships may not have lapsed there yet.
Hey, Mike, do you remember that you sent this out? Can you update it and send it out again?
I can't, I can't see that from now.
This is all the 50 off memberships?
From last year?
All the people that signed up for 50 offs?
I have, I, yeah, I, I can
Can you send it out, send it out again with those, you know, and somehow Mark resigned up, didn't sign up?
Yes, I have that data.
Can you do that?
Yep. Yeah, one second.
And then I'd also like to see a list of who didn't sign up that signed up last year. Can you pull that up? I mean, you're down 50 some odd thousand. I personally, in my head, know of about 25,000 of people that I know that are not resigning up. And they're not from up north.
And there's normal attrition that, that occurs year over year. And obviously, you want your new memberships to outpace your attrition.
I'd just like to see the numbers so I can, you know.
Yeah, that data's available. I mean, it's updated daily, so.
I'm curious, of those you know, are they not renewing because of the price increase or because they're not playing as much golf or?
I don't believe any of them had to do with price increases.
Okay.
I mean, a couple of guys are moving, you know, there's stuff like that.
Yeah, okay. Normal attrition.
And just for, for full disclosure, I'm one of those that didn't join. And it had, it had something to do with, we're not going to play very much golf this year. Plus, I, I don't enjoy golf. I golfed my whole life like I used to. So hopefully, it'll just be a year and I'll get over it. But, you know, I just want, that, that's my reasons and uh
It does happen sometimes. There's, there's normal attrition.
I just, I mean, it seems like for some reason in Aug, the guys that I play with, there's a lot of guys, I mean, Veris is moving, Jim is moving, Whitlock is moving. There's a lot of guys that seem to not be signing up for good reasons. I mean, there's nothing wrong with it.
Yeah, I, I think for my other friend that's, was a family membership, is it's just that they're not going to play as much. And it doesn't make sense to most, I think we got a bunch of good members here because I know people that have memberships like twice a week. I don't know why they take a membership, but I'm glad they do for us. But you don't join the club if you're not going to play a membership. It, it has something to do with how many times you play. It just, it just, you just do the math and, and do it, so.
During the board-to-board, I want to talk about memberships. And I think, in my mind, I've got an idea that I think may help us with some of the revenue that I think we would otherwise lose, but I, I'll wait till board-to-board.
Do it now. You want me to do it now? Yeah, do it now, right? We can do it now. He's talking about memberships.
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay. In talking to our Canadian friends, there are several of them that are contemplating coming down. They're going to be flying in and shipping their cars in, since they have the rule that, you know, they can't drive out, but they can fly out. But one of the things that has come up is that they have been told that they can have COVID-19 insurance with the caveat that in the event that they see a spike in COVID-19 cases in their area of where they've gone to, they will call them home, or they can lose their insurance. So thus, they'll be going home. Having said that, majority of what I've heard is that the Canadians don't intend to join the full membership and they will pay as they go. A lot of them were full-time members. And I would like to continue the thought of them becoming full-time members, but they're not going to sign up with the idea that they may end up having to go home one month after they sign up and lose 3,000, $3,500. I'd like to think, I'd like the board to consider an out-of-country membership for this fiscal year only. Because of COVID-19, we have a situation that they can't control. If the insurance company says they're going to cancel their insurance, they're going to have to go home. Using a couples as a, as an example, what if we was to charge $850 a month for a couple membership for out-of-country people only? That's basically 1/6 of the current annual membership rate plus some money for bookkeeping, because there will be additional bookkeeping involved. We could apply the same logic to the other memberships, the single membership, whatever type of membership they would, they would qualify for. That way, they could sign up on a monthly basis. So in the event that the COVID-19 spiked down here and they were called home, they would lose whatever they had in a particular month. They wouldn't be losing the full rate. But if we keep them down here for the full six months, we basically get, we get a full membership plus the cost of bookkeeping. I think it's a way, again, it's just for this fiscal year because of the COVID-19, but it provides them protection and it provides us income that we wouldn't otherwise get. They, we would get some income from the green fees, but I would think they probably would pay significantly, pay significantly less and wouldn't come up to anywhere close to the $850 a month. That's my thought.
I can tell you, I even wrote this down. I agree 100% with what you're saying. I had a different way of approaching it, but I agree with what you're saying. I had a COVID Canadian discount and I would give them a player's card and we would agree on a dollar amount per round. And that way, whenever they came down, they could use this card at that rate that we decided. That was, that would have been my idea. But I, the thought of giving the, the Canadians a break, absolutely agree with it. How we do it, that's, you know, we can discuss that, but I, I agree with this.
What about the alternative of providing for the one year only, the right to a pro-rata refund if they have to go back for COVID? In other words, have them buy their membership as they normally would, but if they do need to go back because of the COVID issue, that we would give them a pro-rata refund?
I think, I agree with what Craig said too and Ray, but I don't know if you could do the pro-rated, Neil, just because some, some are coming later.
Yeah, I'm guessing the majority are going to come in January.
They're going to come later and, and
As of right now, my understanding, the border is closed until November 24th.
Right.
Now, my guess is that that's probably going to be extended until the end of the year. And then after the end of the year, they're going to make another determination as to whether, it'll depend a lot on how much COVID activity is going on down, not only, not just Florida, but Texas, California. That's those sites that they would normally go to, Arizona. If they have a significant spike, they're going to call them back. Again, from them states.
The other thing on November 24th is, a lot of these guys go back for Christmas anyway with their families. And if, if the border opens up December 1, they may just say, "We'll come down after, after Christmas."
Well, and in talking to them also, those that are coming down prior to Christmas will not be going back.
They can't.
Because they, well, for one thing, they can't. The other thing is, if they do go back, Canada requires a 14-day quarantine, so they wouldn't be able to see their family anyway.
Yeah.
So, once they get down here, I think we've got them captive. I think that we need to go ahead and understand the problem that they have with the insurance. It's a significant issue. But I still, I think, you know, if we can get once, if we can get it broke down to a monthly rate to where it's 1/6 of, I think it's, I think it's something that we could do.
And it would, it would have to be based on them having a, either a single or a family membership this, this year, year, well, this past year. If they had that, they qualify for this discount. If they didn't have it, I'm not so sure they, they should be eligible for it.
I, I can live with that.
Yeah.
I can live with that.
Just
It's not, well, there is a caveat there though. This could very well, you know, there's a lot of Canadians that don't have memberships here. They live in Tanglewood, they live in Highland Ridge, they live somewhere else. If they could come in here at $850 a month as out-of-country people, I don't know, maybe we get more members again from that. I, I mean, it's, it might be worth the risk of whether they've had a, you know, a, a membership before or not.
The only problem you get into with a monthly charge is not everybody's going to come down at the 1st or the 30th or whatever it is. So somebody's going to want to play on the 15th. What are you going to tell them? I mean, I'm just playing devil's advocate.
I, I understand. And I, I don't, I don't know which way the best.
We currently have a policy for the three and five month that it starts on the 1st or the 15th. You could apply it to that.
Yeah, but these people come down from Canada, you can't tell them, "We've got to wait two weeks."
Typically, what they would do is they would pay green fee for two weeks or, you know, that's how it works now.
That's why I was saying, come up with a price per round. Plus, the other consideration you've got to remember is these people, they paid for these full memberships last year and they were cut short.
Sure. I understand. And, and I just wanted to put in one point of, you know, kind of between the two. And I think your price point is pretty good. I did the math. It's about right. Is I would lean more, instead of the play card, I would lean more towards the membership side, because a lot of those folks, you know, you can't be an MGA member unless you're a member of the club, which means you can't play in all the couples events and all that other stuff. other stuff. So I would lean more towards that idea, just throwing my two cents in there.
Take a step forward.
So they would participate in those events and actually, you know, spend more money and all that other things. And those are the things they want to participate in anyway. That's the reason why they pay a full membership for six months to begin with.
Yeah, the goal of membership is always to get more commitment, so I'm more in favor of the membership than the player card.
Who knows, who knows the law? If they come down in January, is the six months or their 182 days, whatever it is, is that on a calendar year? So in other words, if they come down in January, if they had to take into consideration the following fall in that, does anybody know? I don't.
I believe that is correct.
Is that it?
It's six months in a calendar year.
On the calendar year?
I believe.
In which case, if they come down in January, they're going to be gone by March or April.
And I can get us an answer.
They'll be gone by March or April, assuming that everything's fixed by the following year.
I think we can direct Mike to work something out and come back to us with it, I think.
Yeah.
If it has, if it has the board's majority, the...
Yeah, I think we've got a consensus to work something out.
If we want to, absolutely.
And I'd work with Tanya to get what other resolution we need and bring it back for the next meeting.
And it seems like we're pretty well in agreement that, with Craig's suggestion...
The monthly membership in the $850 range.
There is some bugs you've got to work out.
Absolutely, sure. We'll try to navigate through those, but instead of coming up with five scenarios, we can, I'll work in one direction and see where it goes. And if I have issues, I'll, obviously, we'll try to get off the record.
I do have a question, Mike, to talk to you on the staff reports and you're up now, is, are we raising our rates like we're supposed to? Because that's important, too, because if you're charging new memberships, and if we're still advertising for $28 a round, and we're going to do that in November, I mean, I think we're going to have some problems there.
No, actually, to be honest with you, with golf the way it is, we have no reason to discount.
Okay.
We're running rack rate right now, which is our typical October rack rate.
Okay.
And to be honest with you, we're 70% ahead of last year's pace in greens fees, so we're...
I just, I didn't want us to start competing with...
No. The way things are, we don't, unless we decide a particular Sunday looks slow, but no, we're doing well.
So if we bring back rates to the board in the October 23rd meeting, or 4th, whatever Friday that is, we would need a resolution. We will also need to advertise those rates as a public hearing seven days in advance. We're looking at that right now.
These are level discussing?
Well, if...
The Canadian deal?
We can bring it to you to discuss, and then we would bring it back to you on November 14th to adopt.
When are they coming down?
I mean...
I know some of them are coming 20th of October.
So I think you, like you said, you want to have it adopted prior to...
How do we shorten that? So that it becomes available now?
We have to advertise.
10 days.
We're going to have to advertise, yeah.
It's a 10-day advertising.
Yeah.
Look, maybe just have Mike come up with something new and meet with us personally, I guess, and then advertise it.
I think we, I might be wrong, but we could, for those folks coming down early, we, maybe we could charge rounds for their accountant and then credit it back on the backend. You know, you know what I mean? If that's, if we're allowed to do that, you know, if they, if they pay $200 in greens fees until this comes out, we could then give them a discount.
I don't want to turn anybody away.
Yeah. Since we're on that, and I don't want to get this too far, since we're on this process of putting in this membership, I did send out an email about a possible Twilight membership. If the board is okay with that idea, we could do it all, we could do it all at the same time.
I'm sorry.
No, the Twilight membership, the proposal, since we're going through this process, if the board, if we have consensus that we like that idea, we could do this all at one time.
You mean, have a conversation on Twilight?
Well, if we're going to adopt a membership rate...
Talking about putting it in the resolution.
I don't like the, I don't know, where did this Twilight thing come from? I mean, I've seen it, I don't remember where it is.
Yeah, I emailed it out, just there was some interest in it. So we, you know, Andy brought it to my attention that he might have some interest in a possible Twilight membership, and we have a lot of Twilight play, period. So he thought it could be an extra vehicle to develop more revenue. So we put together something to present, and that's how we, you know, where we're at.
How would it work? What would be different about Twilight membership as opposed to Twilight play?
It would be basically unlimited Twilight play. So after, you pay one rate, let's say, one of the couples that's interested in it lives on the second hole, and they like to go play golf at 5:30 or 6 o'clock in the summertime, and they can go get nine holes in, you know, the pro shop's closed, so they don't have to make arrangements ahead of time. They can just say, oh, hey, honey, you want to go play golf? And they just want to go. And there's, that's one story. And that gives them that. It really doesn't give them any other benefit other than unlimited Twilight golf. In the proposal, there was a proposal where if you came out before Twilight, you could get a 25% discount, which is up for discussion. I mean, we don't need to include or disclude anything we'd like, but that was just what was started in a proposal.
I mean, I'd have, personally, before I could support it, I got to look at it and compare it to the other rates we got.
Yeah, I don't think we're ready to put it into a resolution form.
So, going back to the Canadian membership, Monday morning, you'll need to put together a short rate schedule, maybe send it to the board, but we have to advertise it, we have to submit it to the paper Monday before 2:00 p.m., just so that we can get it in by Wednesday to meet the 10-day deadline. The paper is always a two-day window, just to get any advertising in there, so, and that's to advertise for a public hearing to adopt those rates on October 23rd.
So we would need to do that by Monday?
Monday morning. Chrissy, you'll need it by noon, so we can get it to the paper.
Well, the board will need to approve it before you can get it to the paper, right?
Well, he's going to have to reach out to you individually, or we have to wait till November 14th. So, we're only talking about the single membership and the family membership, is that correct?
We're talking about advertising the adoption of it.
Right, but I mean, the rates. We're going to have a single rate for Canadian, and we're going to have a family monthly rate, is that correct?
That's, yeah, that's what I would do.
Okay.
And I guess the question that we need to clarify, is it Canadian, is it foreign, and is it limited to residents of Sunland Lake and Tanglewood? Or is it any Canadian that comes?
I would say, why not anybody, any out-of-country person that is, if we can get some new people to come in and, under that membership, it's only this year, but maybe we find out that there's something to this, and I don't think we should restrict it to just Sunland Lake and Tanglewood.
Should we have a higher non-resident rate, like we do for other memberships?
I don't want to get it, that'd get it out.
No.
If it's going to get confusing, that's for...
It's going to get confusing, we just got to get it clarified.
Let's just try to...
We don't do that with any other membership, why would you do it with this one?
Yeah, okay.
What was that? I didn't remember.
We don't do it with any other membership, why should we do it with this one?
So, for clarification, do we want to restrict this to those who are members prior year, or do we want to leave it open for anybody?
I say leave it open for anybody.
I think as long as they are Sunland Lake or Tanglewood people, it's open to them.
Open to residents.
So residents from...
Or non-residents.
Residents from out of the country.
International residents.
Residents only.
I still think it's easier for you guys if you do a price per round as opposed to a monthly thing and dealing with that. Wouldn't it be, you tell, what is easier for you?
Then we've got the complication.
I think it'd be easier to do it unlimited.
Yeah. The membership is probably easier, because if you're selling the player card, then you've got to set a policy as to who's restricted to buying the player card at that rate. Or is it open to anybody?
You want to do a charge per month?
I guess if they had a member, you know, basically, we're looking at those people that were members, and we didn't want, we don't want to lose that income. So, back to your point, if they were a member last year in any of the type of memberships, then they should qualify for this special one-time rate. I'm okay with that.
And in theory, if they weren't a member before, they would qualify for the 50% off rate.
Last year, too.
That is correct. And I just, when I did the quick math here, so January, if $850 a month from January, February, March, just doing the math on, I did it real quick, with a couple having four rounds a week each, because that's about what our Canadian friends play, so at eight rounds, I calculated to be about $26 a round. Now, if we start doing that for folks that are coming in in that time of year paying $36, $40 a round, or $50 a round, it could go backwards. I may lean more towards restricting it to past members. That's just quick math.
I think that makes sense.
That was the whole idea behind it.
We create the monthly program for past members for this year only, and if any others come in, they could get the 50% off.
Which would probably make more sense to them.
Based on three rounds a week, I mean, four rounds?
Yeah, and most won't, most won't sign up unless it's an advantage to them. It's the same way to me, you know.
I mean, we're trying to entice these people to play, not, not...
Well, that just based it off for a dollar per round number, the 850 is where it's at. The average round of, the average round per week for the Canadian is about four rounds, some play five and six. That's a pretty accurate number. I've, I've ran the numbers, it's about right.
What am I paying as a single, $3,400? And you want to charge $800 a month, and that's a break?
No, no, no.
It'd be less for single.
It is, because it limits how much they have to buy.
It'd be less for single.
Right, I was...
I understand. Oh, what? Oh, that's the, that's the couple rate, it's 850?
Yes, 850.
Yeah, that's a couple rate.
And what's the single rate?
And we're not settling on 850. I think we'll go with the ones, you know, we'll calculate it out to...
This is supposed to be easy, this is not, make this...
No, it's fine, I'll make a point. I just wanted to make sure if we were offering it to...
Get us something that we can review, so that we can get something formalized by Monday, so they can get it into the paper.
Absolutely. And the Twilight membership in there as well?
Twilight, I got to, we'll talk about the Twilight, but I can tell you right now, play before 3:30, at a discounted rate of 25% off the resident rate, I ain't going to fly.
And we could take that out, that was part of the discussion, it doesn't have to be in there.
Want to resend it to us and we'll discuss it? I don't want to publish this.
I would, I would keep it separate, and we'll talk about Twilight later.
That's fine, too.
Canadians are allowed six months in a calendar year, or six months at one time.
So they're going to go back home?
Yeah.
Around Easter time, whenever Easter is, they'll go back, yeah. If not sooner.
Provided they come when they come.
Yeah, if not sooner, yeah.
Okay. Well, that's all for my report, I guess.
I got, are you done? Because I got a question for you. We got, we got to discuss this, whether we want to or not. The card issue for this between now and January 1st? What are we going to do if we have, I mean, are you going to restrict play? Are we going to, I mean, what are we going to do?
This is a good time to have this, because my recommendation would be to, to the membership, allow them to use one of our carts based on availability. So if we're having a busy day, we're going to know several days ahead, we can alert those golf groups that day to say, we have a limited amount of carts, we cannot guarantee you, you know, a club cart, so please either double up with somebody you're comfortable with, or find another cart that you can use. That's where, and we would provide that information with some lead time, so they can make arrangements, but that, it is not going to happen every day. But that would be my recommendation is the easiest way to go, and it doesn't satisfy every scenario for certain people, but...
Let me ask you this, what are you going, to Mike's point a little while ago, what do you do about Veterans Day?
Well, a lot of times, see, the thing about Veterans Day tournaments and certain tournaments like that, you get to choose who you're playing with. So if you're playing with your spouse, I'm sure you're comfortable to ride with your spouse, you can use your cart. Typically, that event is overwhelmingly membership, but you get to choose who you, who's in your foursome, and I think more people in that scenario are more comfortable to ride with somebody, as opposed to, I'm playing in Jim's group and Jim's got me playing with Bob, you know, and I don't want to ride with Bob, because I don't know Bob, but I have not evaluated that particular tournament yet to see if it is a problem, but it potentially could I think in that scenario, the membership is more apt to double up, because it's going to be, a lot of times, it's couples, or really good friends.
Has past veteran tournaments required more than 100 carts?
I don't, I don't believe so. I, off the top of my head, I can't give you exactly that, but I don't, I don't think so. I can get you that number.
I think one of the questions is, is do, do you want me to get with Mike and Tanya and review the contract and send a letter to Easy Go and say, based on your, you know, you've, you're essentially in breach, it hasn't caused us any problems yet, but we are foreseeing, you know, we may need these additional carts in the future, so make sure that we're on the top of your list, because if we don't get carts when we absolutely need them, and we can get them from someplace else, we're going to, and we're going to seek damages for having to go to somebody else. I mean, is that something we want to look into?
There is no one else to go to.
Oh, that's, there is a now, but in, I mean, once...
Right now, they aren't, we're contracted with, are we contracted with them for them to give us carts?
Yeah, I believe it ends December 31st is the date on that.
So theoretically, if you ask them for 20 carts for Veterans Day, that's within the agreement that we have.
But they can't provide them anymore.
Well, we don't know that yet. Because based on what I'm hearing, is that it's just right now, and then come November, they may be available.
It could be possible, but I don't...
That's what we don't know yet.
Right.
Well, and there are lots of cart dealers and used car dealers that are around here, that we could, we could make some phone calls and see what they would charge us to loan, to rent us carts for a day, and then charge that to Easy Go.
We do that for other clubs. We do contact other local courses around here to borrow carts. That is, that's something we've done in the past.
So, so yeah, I think sending that kind of a letter to Easy Go, that we will go back on them for our costs.
And to let them know that, you know, the Veterans Day, because that seems to be the big issue. We want to make sure that we can provide all the carts that are necessary at that time.
I'm not sure yet.
We don't think so. We think it...
I'm not positive.
The veterans tournament is usually, usually mostly member carts. But I mean, he's going to, he's going to evaluate it and then let us know if that's going to be an issue.
Yeah.
I want to ask the obvious question, when are we going to decide not to do individual carts? I know it's a rock or hard place, the governor has opened up the whole state, there's still a pandemic. Eventually, we're going to have to make a decision. Just throw it out.
Still, some people that have underlying conditions that...
Yeah, I mean, it's...
Tablet some from riding with someone else?
Yeah, I would table, I don't think we have enough information to make that call today.
And the CDC hasn't changed their rules, the Florida has, but CDC has...
I think we made a decision for now, that we will encourage double, but not require double.
Correct.
Correct.
And we'll, if it gets to the point where we don't think it's an issue, and we still have some people who do think it's an issue, then I think we can cross the bridge and say, well, then you're going to have to pay extra for a single. But at this point, I think we just encourage double and not require it.
Okay. My turn. Good morning, supervisors. Couple of updates regarding the shuffleboard courts. The documents have been submitted to RPAC for the 50% reimbursement for that project. The total cost of the project was... The total cost of the project was $187,457.80, making that 50%, $93,728.90. More than likely, it'll be in the beginning of next week. I will do a walkthrough with the RPAC liaison. They said that they require a walkthrough just of the facility before they submit the documents, but just wanted to let you know that that has been done. The shed for the shuffleboard equipment that will be used to store the pucks and the sticks and the, everything else that goes along with that, was delayed, so it will actually be delivered on Saturday. It was supposed to be here on Thursday, but Mike's team has arranged to kind of work that out, so that we can get that set up. Couple of updates regarding the master plan. The recreation master plan survey that was out for about 30 days has been completed. As of right now, it's about 42 pages, so I'm working on making that into a document that's a little bit easier to read, and we will get the information sent out to you.
How many respond, responses did you get?
I want to say it was about 350.
350?
Yeah, somewhere in that number. Upward, definitely upwards of 300. The workshop will be held on October the 23rd. That's following our next meeting, so that'll follow, yes, in two weeks, our meeting. After that, we will hold the recreation master plan. Bruce with SNME will be here to host that public workshop. It'll run very similarly to the way our meetings did with you individually, with Bruce. That is being communicated to the community through the newsletter. This is gonna be the second month that that has gone out. There was a blurb on it on the survey, so anybody who took the survey at the end of that, they were notified that there was gonna be a public workshop, and to kind of stay tuned for the date. It is up in some flyers around the community, in our different bulletin boards we have by the community center, and the racket club, eBlast in on social media, so we're trying to really heavily promote that, to get some good attendance for the recreation master plan workshop. And then the last update I have is that the district will be participating in trick-or-treating this year. We were waiting, we had waited to kind of see what the city of Sebring was gonna do, and they did approve for the city of Sebring to do trick-or-treating. So, trick-or-treating will happen in Sun and Lake on Saturday, October 31st, from 6:00 to 9:00. So, we will be sending out the door tags, as we have the last couple of years. They will go out in this month's newsletter, so we encourage residents to just hang those door tags on their door, if they do, in fact, want to welcome trick-or-treaters. That's something that we've been doing the last few years.
We approved that.
The, oh, of the trick-or-treating?
No, having trick-or-treat.
Oh, very good.
Who, who did it? In Sebring, the city council or the county?
The city of Sebring, for the city of Sebring. We were waiting to see what direction the, the city itself was going to take.
So, we, we're probably gonna, we're gonna do it, right?
Yes, we are, yep, we are gonna do trick-or-treating.
Because I get asked those kind of questions, where did that come from? And I said, well, it's you, the county or Sebring or?
Right, there, the, I believe the different cities were able to kind of make their own decision on that, because I don't know that all of Highlands County is participating, but the city of Sebring is.
Right.
Have you done any work towards seeing if there is grant money available to us for working on pools, bark, cart paths, or not path, cart paths, a path, et cetera, et cetera?
We had a, a phone conference with the firm Guardian, and he has submitted a proposal. There are monies available through Florida Department of Environmental Protections, with mud and U.S. Forestry. So, I have that proposal on my desk, and we, and we're gonna, I'm gonna look over it, but that is to start the research process. And he also will be utilizing the, the recreation master plan as a guide. But, but yes, we have, and so, this, the proposal is just for research, to begin that research for us. Yes, sir.
Is there, well, it's, it's premature, but grant money in the event that we were to need to update waste treatment? Is there grant money that we can be looking for on that?
I don't know of any grant money, but I do know that there is loans available for new construction for water and wastewater treatment plants. That is something that we could certainly look into, but I don't know, yeah, I don't know.
Be premature, but I just wondered if there's.
Correct, yeah, I don't, I don't know of any, but that's something we certainly can look into.
Greg, where I was a city council member, when, in my younger days, we, we had our own sewer plant and water, and we redid our sewer plant. And there was no grants for it. It was, we got a 30-year 1% or something like that, but there's money always available, because no, no town, no city, probably any special district's gonna pay for a water and sewer plant. I mean, it's all in loans, and I'm sure we'll be able to qualify for that, but it'd be a low, low cost, low interest.
Yeah, low interest loan. Okay.
General counsel?
All right, I'm assuming you all got a chance to review the memorandum on the gas tax issue. So, I guess what I would be looking for at this point is, I guess my recommendation would be to, we've got a new county commissioner that's overseeing the, the district, maybe set up a meeting between myself, Tanya, that commissioner, one of you, five. If anybody'd like to volunteer, and just bring this to their attention. I don't think this is anything that can be done 2021, the, the 2020, 2021 fiscal year, but if we can get on their radar, we might be able to potentially get something into the 21, 22.
I'd like some more time to review that.
Okay.
Okay.
And then, I think, it'd be appropriate, as president of the board, that I join you in that meeting.
Okay. Okay, so that's what I think we'll do, is try and, I'll get with Tanya, and we'll get that, something like that set up down the road sometime. Other than that, I had a, I had a conversation with the bondholders. They're, they're coming up with some ideas about how they're going to be putting together the, this is the, the phase five bondholder, and we just approved the, the reduction to the 0% on the bonds. They're coming up with some marketing ideas. They were asking about the district's position as far as the assessments go, and I said, the best, you know, we can't, we cannot reduce assessments, we can forgive assessments, the best we can do is reducing penalties and interest. But I said, but the, the one thing that we can do, potentially, is to put a moratorium on foreclosures. Based on the values of these lots, it would not make fiscal sense to initiate foreclosures on any of them. However, one of the things they're talking about doing is basically consolidating as many lots as possible. They'll be contacting the current owners, and they are expecting to get quite a few deed and loo. They'll be putting all those properties into a single owner, and then, you know, if it's, if they've got 100 properties or 200 properties all under a single owner, then we are in a realm where it might make fiscal sense to do a, a group, or, or a, not a group, but an individual foreclosure against the one individual company that holds all those properties. So, what I would recommend is that we, you know, come into a, we had an agreement that says, we're gonna give you five years, where we'll agree that we're not going to initiate a foreclosure, to give you the chance to, you know, trying to make this system work. Because, like I say, the only way it's feasible, in my opinion, is if they consolidate into a, a single ownership, and then, you know, if, if, if they're still sitting on 200, 300 properties, and not paying assessments after five years, then maybe it is time for us to, to look into foreclosure.
We, we could conceivably agree to not a foreclosure, but we couldn't prevent the county from doing it.
Correct, but I think that, that's one of the things they're doing, is if, when, when they take a deed and loo, and they receive their property back, that's gonna be their first thing, is to pay off the county taxes. So, and like I say, they're trying to make the properties more marketable, but they don't want to flood the market. They, they realize they've got to be competitive with what the county has to offer, because, you know, obviously, the county's erased all the debts, and so the county can sell it for what they want to. But, and like I say, part of their goal is to have people retain them, but they understand that they are gonna be, most likely, going to be getting some properties back. So, they just want to make sure that if they take, if they agree to take deeds and loo, that the district's not gonna come knocking on their door, you know, saying, hey, we see that you now own 200 lots, we're ready to come take all of them from you, so.
Dave, I got a question for you. I, I was told that the, the house on Granada that we've had so much trouble with, come in and paid $6,000, and now they're back to square one.
Oh, I hadn't, I hadn't heard about that, okay.
Well, that's what I heard. And I just know I'm gonna be asked, because I, I guess they can do some stuff, and they're trying to save it, I guess, but does that take them back to square one, where we could go through another two years of getting where we were now?
Well, then, I guess if they're, if we don't see, if we don't see progress, you know, unfortunately, there's, if they're maintaining, are they maintaining their permit? Is that, when you say bring it back to square one, is that they've, they've?
Well, they, they paid $6,000 in back cost and fines, I'm assuming, and, and cleaned it up some.
Okay.
But most of the people that I'm sure my fellow guys get, we get a lot of questions about them, why, why is it still there? Well, we're trying to get rid of it, or get it finished.
Yeah, I would have to check if the, if the, I mean, if they brought the permit current, if they've paid off, if there's, was there code enforcement assessments? Is that what it was? If they brought, if they brought the code enforcement assessment current, then yeah, we have to wait for them to violate again.
Could you look into that, though, and let us, let us know? Because that's something we're certainly gonna get questions on.
I just gotta replace all that wood. All that wood's rotten.
Yeah, there's a lot of work to be done on it. I just don't want it there another three, four years.
Yeah.
That's all about it. All the good night.
Thank you.
Okay, general managers' report.
Good morning. Just a few things I wanted to like to mention. The speed bumps have been installed on Barbarosa, so if you haven't, you know, Mike had reported that, that that was finished up this week. And I want to thank staff for the, the front entrance and the new signage, and if you haven't taken notice yet, please do so. We've transformed, you know, the front entrance, and of course, if you haven't seen the news, the new lettering on the signs and things, so I want to thank staff for their hard work on that. We also, next meeting, would like to go ahead and adopt the board meeting schedule for 2021, and along with the holidays. So, if you know of any conflicts, or we, what we do is we look at the MGA schedule, and usually, there's not any conflicts. I don't know that there is. So, we, we look at that before we, you know, propose any board meeting dates also. So, if you know of anything, let me know.
We discussed, we discussed a couple of weeks ago about doubling up during budget time, as opposed to having one meeting a month go to two.
Yes, so we're looking at that.
I mean, I'm still in favor of that, I don't know about.
Yeah, that was my comment to her. I, I want, I want more meetings in the summer.
Okay.
And I don't, I mean, that's our job. And I know it's more work for the staff, but we, it's just too long between meetings with everything we got going.
Yeah.
So, I would, I would want two, three extra meetings in the summer, so we.
And, and the other thing, talking of meetings, we had a really nice turnout for the supervisor.
Meet the candidates.
Meet the candidates. And I'm thinking, in my view, we ought to, at least once a quarter, maybe have an evening meeting that might get more residents out. I don't know what the rest of you think about that.
We tried that three, four years ago.
We did.
And it didn't work, but I'm, I'm willing, the people might be diff, yes, we did it.
We did.
We did, and it, it didn't work, but I'm willing to try it again. It's, you know, that was four years ago, I think, or three, and it, it wasn't what I wanted, but we, I'm, if somebody wants to try it.
Okay, well, let me ask this, since you've got more experience. Is it the venue? Because I know I attended a board meeting over there a few years ago at, at Sun and Lake, I mean, at the Island View, and it was well-attended. And it maybe just, I happened to be there, because it was a Hot Topic meeting. Does that venue pull more people than this venue?
It, it has, it typically has.
Yes, and I, I'm the one that switched it to there when I was president, because I thought it was just, it would help the attendance, and I thought it did, and I think Tanya did, but the incoming president didn't like it over there, so it, it's really up to probably the president where, where it's done, but it, it's a better deal over there, in my mind, but.
We don't have a speaker system over there.
No.
We get enough complaints about the speaker system here. Of which, brings up a point, did we ever go out for quotes on trying to get something done?
Not yet, we have not, no, sir.
I thought the speaker system over there wasn't too bad, was it?
It's limited, it's very limited.
Well, ours, I mean, we do have audio, but I just want to say, you know, having meetings over in that area could be a potential conflict of, with, with business, depending on the time of year, so I don't know how you feel about that, but I just wanted to throw that in there.
We, we did use the Island View during the summer, when we had summer camps here.
Yeah.
And that was, and then, but then we continued that, so, but it could be a conflict as far as, as business in season.
And then, as far, one of the things that did come out of the meet the candidates, for those people that attempted to watch it on site, they said they couldn't understand people talking, that it wasn't coming through clear.
Did they use the house audio, or was it this audio?
It was yours.
It was our house audio? Okay.
I believe he said he watched it on Zoom.
Yeah.
And he could not understand.
Zoom didn't work very well, the people I talked to.
Okay.
It broke up all the time.
Right.
Yep.
Well, if two people talk, when you, it blips, and you gotta hit a mute button in order for it to work properly.
Okay, thank you, that's all I have.
Okay, unfinished business?
None.
New business?
None.
Committee reports?
None.
Public comments? Anybody from the public? There's two of you.
Javita McKinney, I'm still thinking about whether or not I'm a resident, no, I'm kidding. The meeting, you could hear it, I think it's the point of people knowing how to use Zoom, possible, so maybe do that, and you all knowing how to use the microphones. I think the evening things would be great. It was more than four years ago, because I've been here four years. So, there were different people here, so I think you should try it, maybe every four years, you know. Just try it again, because it's a whole different people here. And good news, the drug dealer that used to live next door to me has moved out. No, she got some help, so I won't be mean. Honestly, I, I called D-Fax, it went through, everything, she got help, so this is a good thing, guys. It's not like I'm being honorary to my neighbor, so I am helping out my neighbors. And not only in that way, I don't always cause trouble. I'm also doing some, the preschool that I have online is a help, too, so.
Very good.
Am I a troublemaker, guys? No? I'm not sounding like a troublemaker.
No, not at all. Okay, seeing no other public comment, I'll bring it back from the board to board.
I just, I just got one thing, because obviously, the meeting's over.
No.
My question's for Tanya, it's all the way.
Oh, Tanya had to go catch an airplane.
So, I just, what's the, what's a family membership? How much is a family membership?
$49.93.
That would be after tax?
44%.
Right.
So, quote $5,000. If you take six months into 5,000, the 850 is not so attractive, that you want to charge them a month?
No.
You think that's too high or too low?
Too high.
No, 800, if you buy 5,000 by six, it's.
800 times 5 is $4,000, right?
Six times 800 is 4,800.
4,800, right. So, is that, so we're gonna give it to them for what?
850.
What?
Because there's extra accounting to have to deal with it monthly.
Six times 850 is over 5,000. So, where's the, where's, where's the, where's the, where's the deal?
It's based on, but it's only by month, too.
But they're not paying, they're not gonna pay all six.
Six months times 8.50 is over 5,000, right? Am I doing that right?
5,100.
5,100. And if they buy, if they come down and buy the six-month thing, it's, it's 5,000.
Oh, then they can?
And that should be, and they should might as well.
We're supposed to be giving them a break.
Well, we are giving them a break because they could conceivably only be here for three months and only have to pay 2,500.
But the month at a time comes out to more than six months?
Right. In that situation, they would only be here six months anyway. If they're going to be here the full six months, they should, they should just go ahead and join the regular membership.
They don't know that they're going to be.
Exactly. Exactly. I don't think it's, it's not necessarily a deal. It's just a way for them to not get stung.
It is a deal because they don't get, they get half a monthly rate otherwise.
If they're here and playing, I think they're happy paying what they would normally pay. They just don't want to get on the hook for three months and can't be here.
That's fine. I can tell you if, if that's the deal, I'm a no. I don't think it's a deal for them. I mean, we, I mean, these people left early last, this past year, and now we're saying, well, we're going to give you the Sun and Lake COVID discount, you know?
How about if we gave them the Sun and Lake COVID discount at $850 a month, but total not to exceed the cost of a regular six-month membership?
Well, be a year of membership.
I mean, if you got, I mean, I'll be outvoted on this. That's fine.
Well, people, Ray, I just, people won't join unless it's benefit for them to begin with. This is not, you, you get it, you got a membership and if you only play two days a week, you probably shouldn't have a membership. But people buy these memberships because they play four or five times a, a week, and this is a savings for them throughout the year. This is not a, but like I said, we have a lot of people at Sun and Lake that buy a membership that don't get their money out of it. But memberships are for those who play a lot.
What do you think the rate should be?
It's not a deal thing. It'd be a deal for anybody who's a husband and wife and they want to play five days a week. They're going to jump on that, whatever it is, because they're saving a lot of money.
But what do you think the rate should be?
I think there should be some sort of a savings. I mean, 20% off to what the, the full price would be or something, something like that. That's all. You guys will have to answer to them. I'm going to tell them I tried.
I don't think anybody will buy a membership to play twice a week. Whatever.
I'm not talking, this has got nothing to do with the conversation.
Well, you wouldn't buy a membership if it's not worth it to you.
I wouldn't buy a membership, if I was playing twice a week, you wouldn't buy it for $850 either?
No, that's what I meant.